Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's January 7th, 2025. This is a special meeting of the Gratten Board of Education being held at Central Office. We have most people present except for Dean, Andrea and Adrian. And the first, the second item is discussion of the electric bus application grant. And we have Shannon online to on Zoom, I guess, to talk to us about that grant.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Hope you all had a good break. So I collected some answers to the questions that you brought up at the last meeting. I guess it would be best to just kind of run through the questions you had. So just a reminder, this is to apply to the clean school bus rebate program being offered through the EPA. They just announced today, actually, that the application deadline has been extended to January 14th. Originally, it was this Thursday, the 9th. So that was good news.
That is good news.
January 15th?
January 14th, yep.
15th, okay.
Doesn't give us a whole lot more time.
Yeah, a little.
Yeah. Sam, is it okay if I just?
Yes, please do.
Go ahead, okay. So, um, so one of the questions was, will the program be offered again? What is the length of the program? So the program will be offered again next year. So as of now, it is just through fiscal year 26. But I imagine since it's, it's tends, it's a growing program, it'll probably be offered even beyond that. But it is guaranteed through fiscal year 26. The cost of the buses, uh, so we were able to get information on a full-size bus. Ranges in cost from 385,000 to 450,000, uh, which is just for the bus. And that, so for a full-size bus, that actually exceeds the amount that the rebate provides for an individual bus. The rebate goes up to 325,000. The estimated cost for a shorter bus is around 250,000 per bus. And that would actually be with a Green Power Nano Bus. We also put a call out to, and we submitted an online form to the eFord electric bus, which seems like it's a more popular model. But numerous calls, we did not get a response from them yet. I'm assuming they're pretty popular right now with everybody trying to submit for the clean bus. But I would estimate that's probably within that range. And we searched quite a bit, but unfortunately could not find a electric, electric passenger van that could be used by a school district. It looks like Ford is considering making one. They currently have a cargo van, but as of now, it can't be retrofitted with passenger seats. It's not being used in school districts, but it seems like there's a demand for them. So maybe that will be available within the next couple of years. There was another bus, or there was another company called Lightning, which I thought looked promising, but it looks like they've gone out of business. So I don't know. Personally, I would, I think, I don't know how Sam feels, but I would feel a little more comfortable with a well-known company like Ford. But again, this isn't really my, my forte here, but let's see. Uh, we, we talked with STA and to add three buses to be used for activities and field trips during the day would not conflict with the contract at all, and they wished us well. The current chargers could accommodate both buses and vans. They all use the same type of charger. Uh, the short school buses would require a special license, a CWD license. So we would have to use, um, yeah, we would have to use people who are certified with that. Um, so there would be most likely an extra expense there. I did some research online and there was a University of Delaware study that estimated annual maintenance expenses for electric buses. They estimated it would be around 1,700 to $2,000 per year for a full-size bus. And I spoke with Ray and, um, yeah, Ray Angold primarily about a rough cost for what he thought our insurance premiums might increase by. He didn't unfortunately have time to really investigate that. But, um, it would really depend on whether we're just insuring, if we own the vehicles and we're insuring the vehicles, or whether we're also insuring our own drivers. So if it were to just insure the vehicles and we're going to hire STA drivers, then he was estimating it would be in the several thousand range. But if we're insuring our own drivers also, then it could be upwards of like 5,000 to 7,000. And so that was that. I didn't do too much, I didn't spend too much time trying to calculate what are, are a typical field trip from here to New Britain to bring a, a, one bus round trip. If the, if it's a full-day trip, that costs about $800. To do a in-district, uh, field trip, STA charges us $150 for a two-hour trip. So they just charge us a flat rate. So it would have taken me a little more time to do those calculations to figure out like what the cost benefit of this would be. But that's so, that's pretty much the information I collected at this point. Do, did I answer everything that you brought up at the last meeting?
I think so, Shannon. From what I have, you answered the questions, um, except for the taxes. Do you know what the taxes would be?
That, I'm sorry, I forgot to look into that.
Okay, don't worry, no worries. Okay, um, so our, our question is, do we want Shannon to go ahead and apply for this grant?
And I'd like to add in my conversations, um, I'd like to see us at least apply, even if it's for one small bus, to just, um, you know, see how that works out. We don't, we're not committed to it, even if we get the grant. But it would be a good opportunity. I know we've had a lot of good, um, working relationships with the town, whether we're using the Thrive 55, borrowing that bus and the driver, or the Parks and Rec. And it saved us quite a bit of money for those smaller trips, like the swim team and those kinds of things. So I was thinking more along the lines of cost savings with field trips that are local and also, you know, for a class or for, you know, sports and robotics and those other things. So, you know, I, I thought this would be a good way to kind of get our feet wet, to try it out without putting too much of an investment into it, right? Especially if it's going to cover the full cost and then maybe some other things that we might need to go with it, you know? So that was my recommendation that we start small and, and try it out and see, see what happens.
Jen, you have a question, Jen?
Yes, about the short bus. I, I didn't quite catch where Shannon said that she would have preferred like a Ford, um, the short bus. What was the brand or vehicle make?
Yeah, so, um, STA recommended that we reach out to DeVivo, which is the primary bus supplier for Connecticut. And, um, so they, they helped us research this. And the recommendation they sent us was a company called Green Power. And the name of this brand, the, the name of this line is the Nano Beast.
Okay, I'm gonna have to research that.
And how many passengers does it hold, Shannon?
I think it was 20.
Yeah, which is kind of nice. It's kind of a roundabout cloth size, right?
Yeah, so we don't have to commit to a model at, I mean, uh, a brand at this point. We could, we could switch that later on if by the time we hear about the, the rebate, if we decide that the eFord is a better option by then.
I know that, um, Griswold, Sean McKenna's district, has been pursuing this for multiple full-size buses. And I think it's been a couple of years, you might have talked to him, Shannon, or someone did. And it's taken a couple of years and they still don't have them.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it just sounds like they're all on backorder.
So even if we get this, if, you know, we go in and pursue it, it still might not be tomorrow that we get it or next year.
Or next year. Matthew?
Yes, uh, to me, this is a proof of concept. We don't want to be just signaling good intentions and good deeds. We really want to have, if we get a vehicle, a vehicle that can deliver and be economical. The fact that there's a grant, I think, is very important that we do this now. Unless that you guys have some other information, because the designee, the transportation designee, uh, is very much interested in eliminating EV grants. And so if, if there is a grant to have so that we can have a proof of concept without it costing the district a lot of money, I think that would be great.
Yeah, Matthew, that was my thinking too, right in line with it, you know? It gives us kind of an opportunity.
Ian?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I feel like, uh, most of the questions have been answered with Shannon's work. So thank you for that. I agree with Matthew and Susan that, uh, I think we're in a good spot to just do a bit of proof of concept and move forward with it. And also, this is about the time I'm going to have to step away from the meeting. So I'll be back in about maybe 20, 30 minutes. And I'll announce my presence when I return. I'm going to try to monitor the meeting, but I won't be able to participate until such time I announce my re-arrival. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? So is it the, the will of the board to let Shannon go ahead and apply for the grant? Just give me a wave if you say yes. Jen, say yes. Jay, are you listening?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I don't, I don't see where, um, uh, we have anything to lose by at least applying for this and seeing how the, the process works.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
I just came back on.
Okay, uh, what do, what do you think about applying for the, uh, electric bus grant?
If we're vote, I, I'm very supportive of it. So are, are we voting at this point or?
We're kind of doing a straw poll.
It is straw poll.
At least to get the grant moving.
Yeah.
So we can try it out. Yeah. And Ian really was supportive too.
Yeah, okay. All right, Shannon, you have our blessings.
Shannon, thank you so much for your hard work.
We'll wrap up if you need us. Okay, one more thing before I submit it. I will need, um, Bev or a representative from the board to sign off on the, um, Board of Education Awareness Letter.
Okay, and when do you need that by?
So it's due next week, uh, the 14th, so a week from today. So will you be over at the office again, Bev, at some point?
I can come over tomorrow.
Okay, that would be great, just to get your signature.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, Sam.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion and possible action. A second reading of policy P3113, Setting Budget Priorities. And, uh, I'll make a motion to approve policy P3313, Setting Budget Priorities as a Second Reading. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. Matthew, do you want to talk about this?
If I miss something, please pop in. The major change in the proposed policy is that we are articulating that the board will be actively engaged in collaboration with the superintendent. There was, uh, I, I think it's going to be a great, a great opportunity to work together. And the board wants to be more hands-on, the district wants us to be more hands-on. It's a marriage made in heaven. Thank you.
And we did take some time wordsmithing this, even though there's few words.
Matthew, do you want to read the policy for the public?
Would you like me to? Okay, I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, it's a short one.
Uh, Policy P3113, Setting Budget Priorities. The Board of Education shall, on an annual basis, study the school programs in relation to present and future needs of students, staff and community to establish and approve budget guidelines and priorities for the ensuing fiscal year. The superintendent shall take into consideration the financial priority and needs of the district and involve the administrative staff in its development. The board, in collaboration with the superintendent, shall initiate this process each year in September. That gives it, and that is the end of the, other than legal references. That is the end of the proposal. By doing this, starting in September, it gives us a jump on the budget process. Thank you.
Any discussion on this policy? I don't see any. No? Jen?
Should we say something about, um, everything about that was great, but should we, um, mention, um, in line with strategic plan? Cause like, we should always have a strategic plan. I know we're in the process of updating it, but, um, um, it was posted. Maybe it was at like the second sentence, um, like at the very end. When is it? Am I just not seeing posted? It was up like two minutes, like a minute ago.
Yeah, Mark took it down.
Oh, okay. Mark?
Mark, you want to put it back up?
Where it says guidelines and priorities for the ensuring fiscal year? Or should it just say, um, priorities of the strategic plan? I'm okay with this, I'll vote for this. It was just a thought.
Well, I think, I think that that always goes into when you're thinking about the needs of the district, because the strategic plan prioritizes your needs in a year or a couple of years. So I would say that that would be one of those considerations we would keep in mind.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
You know, maybe it's something that I put in regulations that I can more clearly specify. Those are some of the things that we do consider. Maybe I'll take some time and put that in a regulation.
Perfect, thank you. Like I said, I would vote for this. It was just something that I thought more like overarching, like an umbrella.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Mike, you have a question?
Um, yeah, just a comment, the, the September timing. The, because it's talking about the, the budget of the current, the current year as well. I was wondering if we, instead, we can still leave September. Maybe we say like, uh, during or before September or something like that. Or, or before or during September, you know? Cause it's asking when we initiate the process. And I suppose there could be times when we want to do that over the summer.
Well, I think, um, Mike, what I remember Irene talking about is the summer is a really busy time where you're beginning an audit from the year past. So you're, you've got the past year that you're still working with because you've got teachers being paid out of the prior year. You've got the current year that starts in July. So to be forward-thinking about the next budget might be a little much because there's a lot to do and reports to do at the, in the summertime as you're doing that. So I think we thought September was after the summer and we had everything all lined up.
Okay, I'm okay.
We could start it whenever we felt we were ready to start it. But we thought September was a, a good month to get it at least started.
I, I agree with that as a target. So, so I would vote for it like this, but I also would support, um, changing in September to by September. But it, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of approving as a second reading, Policy P3113, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Approved? Okay.
Unanimous.
All right, the next one is discussion and possible action in regard to a second reading of policy P5145, dot five slash four one one eight point one one two prohibit, prohibit, how do you pronounce that?
Prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment. And we see Denise Doolittle on this one, and she's really helped us spearhead this. And she's been to a lot of training with this new law. So she's been able to brief all of us.
Can I get a motion to, so we can discuss this policy? Go ahead, Jen.
Second, or, I, yeah.
Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, oh, I don't have it to read in front of me, the motion, hold on.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, can somebody else make the motion and then I'll just second it? Sorry.
That's okay. To approve policy P5145.5 slash four one one eight point one one two, prohibition of sex discrimination slash sex-based harassment as a second reading. You have a second?
I'll do the second.
Okay, Jen. Okay, Denise, you want to go through this?
Sure, um, so just to orient the board, good evening, everyone. This is a revised policy and regulations and accompanying forms for the new August 1st, 2024 sex-based discrimination regulations that were issued by the federal government. And, uh, this is a second reading. The policy, uh, and regulations were sent back to the policy committee by the board with two requests. One was to replace the word victim with complainant wherever possible. Um, so I want to report to the board that we have done that. I worked with Erica Kreider, our admin assistant, who, um, who supports us with policy. The only places we were unable to make the change is in the legal definitions of domestic violence. And I believe that's it. That was the only area that we really, um, didn't feel comfortable removing the word victim because it's a legal definition of domestic violence.
Thank you, Denise.
And then the second, uh, request that we had from the board was to, uh, please define the process involved when a complaintant makes an oral report as opposed to a written report. And the question was, what do those procedures consist of? Um, and we were fortunate enough to have the board's attorney, uh, call into the policy committee meeting and explain the process. So I'll summarize, um, I'll summarize their comments. So when an oral complaint is brought forward to an administrator, the administrator would meet with the person making the complaint if that person is known. And the administrator would memorialize the complaint in a written summary report. And it's important to note that all of our administrators have been trained in the new August 1st, 2024 procedures. We had Rebecca Goldberg, uh, train all of the district administrators, um, in November. So they've all been trained. We will review the policy and accompanying forms with them, uh, when they are passed by the board. But basically, what the administrator would do is they would, um, they would summarize the report that's being made to them orally. And then afterwards, um, if the report is, uh, accepted, then, uh, it would be investigated. So if there were any maybe missing parts of the complaint or inconsistencies, they would be flushed out during the investigation. But the written report would kind of like jumpstart the process. Uh, let me just see if I had anything else. Um, and I believe, um, I believe that is it. Mr. Schulman, did I leave anything out? I know you're the chairperson of this committee. I want to make sure I didn't.
No, I think you covered it very well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I believe that's it.
Ian's not back, is he?
Nah.
Okay.
In the regulations, so we do have all the different notices and letters and attachments that can be used by the district. So that is definitely, uh, you know, a support system for our administrators if this has to happen. And they typically will call the Title IX Coordinator, which is Denise, to help support them.
Yeah, and, and one other thing I forgot to mention is it is very important that an administrator or the Title IX Coordinator meet with the person who's bringing forth an oral complaint. Because a very important piece of the, of the policy and regulations is offering supportive measures to that individual, which would consist of, um, a plan with, um, some accommodations that would allow the complainant to continue to attend school and benefit from their educational program while the, um, complaint is being processed and the, uh, district is determining if an investigation will ensue.
Any, any questions or comments? Okay, are we ready to take a vote on, um, on the second being of policy, for prohibition of sex discrimination, sex-based harassment?
Actually, Bev?
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry, I couldn't find my raised hand quick enough. I just had one, uh, one quick question for Denise. I remember the old policy, uh, had language for like emergency removal, administrative leave. I think that's kind of clustered in different areas in the new policy. Is that correct? Or does it go somewhere else? I was trying to find it just now, I couldn't come up with it. The old policy had like a specific heading. Actually, I've got it here, emergency removal slash administrative leave, for instance. Now, just thumbing through the new one, I didn't see that as a heading.
Yep, yep, no, thank you, Mike. Um, in terms of the regulations, if you look on page nine of 10, at the bottom, there's a heading, um, disciplinary sanctions and remedies.
Okay, so it's just, it's just more encompassing now.
And it's listed there, yes. That, that is definitely still an option if, if, uh, appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving Policy P5145.5 slash four one one eight point one one two? Say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? So approved. The next one is Policy 3310. And the motion is to approve Policy 3110, expenditures, expending author, authority as a first reading. I, I read the motion, do I have a second? Second, Jen? Okay, Matthew, you want to talk about this or Susan?
So what, I think this one really had a lot of regulations and we are going to get back. I don't know that we've done this yet, but all of that in red is really regulations. So we're going to just move that into another page.
Susan, would you, would you read what has not been barred so that anybody listening can hear it?
Sure. This is purchasing. The goal of a successful purchasing system is to provide the district with goods and services at the lowest price to properly account for all purchases and to designate the proper purchasing of goods and services. The Board of Education or the board, um, or its agents shall refrain from entering into contracts with or purchasing goods or services from any firm or individual who has a sales representative or owner on the board. This policy shall not apply to goods and services that are put out for public bid or where there are no other comparable source, um, sources of supply. All contracts for goods and services, unless otherwise specified, shall be put out for bid annually, with the exception of transportation, which may be negotiated for periods of time um and not to exceed a cumulative total service of five years.
I I have a question on this policy. Okay. Um, the second paragraph. And the first sentence is the Board of Education or its agents shall refrain from entering into contracts with or purchasing goods, services from any firm or individual who has a sales representative or owner on the board, right?
Yeah, so in other words, if you owned a company and you were um and the board was um looking for goods and services, it's almost too close a relationship to have a board member who owned the company.
Okay, but the second, the next sentence is this policy should not apply to goods or services that are put out for public bid.
So you can put it out for public bid, but you can't just go to that organization.
So I can.
So it could, you you could put it out for public bid.
Isn't that a conflict? Like, I can own a company, but you can't go into contract with me. But I can, and I could be on the board and own the company.
Right.
You can't go into contract with me, but I could bid on it.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Well, I would think that the bidding process is the legal process by which, you know, you could.
I don't know. Doesn't seem, it seems like it's a conflict still. Right? Because if you're on the board, you can't even work for the school system. So.
So it could be, it can go out to public bid. Or if there's no other comparable sources of supply, say you're the only game in town that sells a certain thing, even though you're on the board. You know, it might be you're the only one who can provide that. So um that's what I see. I see what uh Mike Whitney's hand. Maybe he'll shine some light on this one. Go ahead, Mike.
Actually, I was just gonna ask some more questions on the same point. Um. So that that point about uh sales representative or owner on the board um, and it's it's the school system that we refrain from doing this. And so doesn't that place onus on the school system to then know? Um, you know, uh, what board members, uh, what companies they own or uh or sales representatives for? Like, we don't currently report that. Um, and my question, my broader question is, um, you know, oh uh owning stock in a company is you're considered part owner? And is that language included? And then for someone like me specifically, I uh work for the University of Connecticut and um and the school system does um coordinate with the University of Connecticut, if not enter into a business relationship with it somehow for their um the early college experience classes. That transaction actually might be through the students to them. But um uh how does that fall? And so so I I'm thinking this, I I this language is very well intentioned. I'm I'm wondering if some of it belongs more in um uh board a board member code of conduct or conflict of interest policy.
We do have that.
But but I don't know if it's, it it says that we can't. We do have that, and it says that we can't work for the school system. I can't remember if it says engage in any business or not.
My recollection, uh, Mike, is that the the key element is whether there is gain involved. So there would be in your situation, even though you are affiliated with UConn, there's no gain to you or your kin. Uh. If there were, you'd have to recuse yourself from a vote. You'd have to announce that. But you know, if you want to say, if if you folks want to, if you choose to uh pass this for first reading, you can still still send it back to us for further work before the second reading.
I think this green language was cave language, though, wasn't it? And I think Floyd had taken a look at all of these policies. And um I kind of given his nod, but we can certainly go back to him and ask him some of these questions.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Uh, Jen, you have a question?
I do. Um. I don't understand or its agents, like, who would the Board of Education's agents be?
Oh, that would be those of us that are working for you guys.
Oh, so would that, because we've been using the district. Should we say district then?
Well, it's actually referring, let me ask Floyd this. I mean, we could even send it to a second reading, bring it back in between to policy and get Floyd to weigh in on this to answer those questions.
There are a few things that we should probably, you should probably look at it again.
Yeah. Mike, you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. Uh, so I did find the the policy on conflict of interest. So it's P four one one eight point one three, and there's a corresponding regulation with it. And and that is, as as Matt says, it's about what the Board of Education, Board of Education members will avoid any conflict of interest. Um, and and that includes us, I would think. Um, I I I'm just worried that uh whereas the conflict of interest regula uh policy and regulations as it written puts the onus on the board member, for instance. Here, it's the school district having to know what each one of us uh is involved in um as a sales rep or owner. Um, and and then I'm also worried, like, if we've got it in one place, why do we need this spelled out here? Um, and then then the last part is, uh, I'm very supportive of getting rid of the red part, because as you uh have pointed out, is regulations, and it will come back that way. But should we I maybe the timing will work out like this anyway, but should we vote that regulation and the new policy in together? Because very often they just have the same number, and I'd be, I'd be just probably easier to vote those in as partners.
We do try to do that.
Two parts.
Go on, Matt.
The history and the district, to my knowledge, is that the board is responsible for policy. The superintendent is responsible for regulations. Legally, as I understand it, she doesn't even, she or he in the future, who knows, uh, doesn't even need to consult us on regulations. However, Susan always does. She and she listens to the policy committee people and has adjusted some of the regulations. What we're missing, I think, is that the intent of this cumbersome sentence, it is a cumbersome sentence. The intent is, if we want to have electric fly swatters, I'm trying to be facetious to keep it light. If we want to get electric fly swatters, and the only place in Connecticut that sells them is a firm is is Whitney Enterprises. The, you know, then when there are no other comparable sources of supply, and that has been determined and can be defended, we're trying to give an a a way to be able to acquire our fly swatters, even if the only manufacturer is Whitney Enterprises.
That's a good.
Yeah, that's a good analogy. But still, that board member is going to have a monetary gain from um that sale.
That's why, that's why the exception is being put into the policy to provide that opportunity.
So they would be the last resort?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If they were.
Okay, the the last resort.
But let me, let me put this past Floyd to get some, you know, answers done. Um, let me see if I can do a mock-up of the regulation, although I'm kind of knee-deep with budget right now, trying to get the best number.
Okay. Jen, did I cut you off? Or did you, did you finish, Jen?
Oh, yes, Beverly, I just didn't understand its agents. So thanks for that clarification.
Your your comments will be noted when we sit down with this again. Thank you.
Jay, you have a question or a comment?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I don't want to debate this all night, because Susan is going to go back to uh Floyd, but I think the relevant policy is actually P ninety-two seventy, um, which is the board member conflict of interest versus the employee conflict of interest. A board member shall not have any direct pecuniary interest in a contract with the school district, nor shall he or she furnish any labor equipment or supplies to the district. In the event that the member is employed by a corporation that has a secondary interest in a corporation or business which furnishes goods or services, the board member shall declare his interest and refrain from debating or voting upon the question of contracting with the company. And it goes on and on. So it'd be interesting for Floyd, maybe, to compare that existing policy in the bylaws to uh what we're trying to do with this uh um with this policy.
Well, we've also seen um town council members who have family members who are on, you know, hired by the board when they, but when they recuse themselves from voting on educational topics, too.
We might also want to consider getting in touch with Jody at Cave and ask why they have a carve-out for something that's probably pretty typically banned in in other parts of our policy manual.
Would you mind reaching out to Jody and I'll reach out to Floyd and we'll divide and conquer?
Happy to do it if you, if that's the board's pleasure.
Okay, so we're going to send this policy back to committee. All right, the next policy is.
Do you want to vote, do you want to vote on the first reading, or do you want to hold off on a first reading?
Because we're going to have a policy meeting in between.
All right, we can vote on the first reading if you want to, Matthew.
But that's your call. I'm just, whatever you want. We've got, we've got a full agenda next week. We've got, going to have a full agenda anyway.
All right. Um, what do you want to do?
Well, I would say go ahead and do the first reading, because we can bring it back. I can get in tou, we can get in touch and then bring it to a second. And if you're still not interested in it or still curious about it, if we don't give you enough information, we can wait to do it again.
Do you feel comfortable voting on this as a first reading? This wave if you do.
I'd I'd probably vote against it at this point.
All right, well, let's just send it back to committee then.
Okay.
All right, the next item is to approve policy P three three twenty, purchasing as a first reading. Do I have a second? Jen, thank you. Um, this policy, I think, went back to Floyd for feedback.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
And um, and we went through it again. Um, Mark's got it up. Can you make it any larger, perhaps, Mark?
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
And again, the red is more regulations, so we're going to definitely put that in regulations. I think Irene has already done that. Um, I don't know that it's been finalized, but she's at least taken some of that red in the middle out. And um again, Floyd gave us feedback on this one. And um, we've made the adjustments. I don't think there was that much that had to be adjusted, Matthew. Do you recall?
No, I think it's, it seems clear to me. I guess I'm going to rely on other members who haven't looked at it already to see if you see something that we missed.
It's really pretty much the original language. This was done in twenty sixteen, so it's not as old as some of the others.
I I I had, I would have had problems in in voting for some of what is in red. Uh, who knows what, how you define proper, but uh, that's gone.
That was good. All right, any comments about this policy? Questions?
Oh, I was just wondering, does the um, the part in red seems like it's going to go and just disappear? Do you anticipate it showing back up in regulations? Seems like.
That's exactly right, Matt. Uh, Mike.
Yeah.
We're going to be putting that in regulations. There might be other things we have to add, too.
Right, I figured, yeah.
Jen?
In the regulation, does it state like um who is an appropriate designee?
Yeah, we could do that. It's, you know, I mean, it usually says superintendent or other staff or superintendent and superintendents designee. So it could be someone in the business office.
Yes, but I wasn't sure if it was a list of just, let's say, your direct reports, because I know you're not going to do this, but say you decide, I don't know, um, a teacher and elementary school to be or designee that day. Yeah, I know you're not, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Technically.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So if we have a list of.
And then you might be related, like, this is a business item, so it might be someone like a business manager.
Yeah, so it could be like, oh, some assistant, um superintendent, business manager.
Yeah.
Whatever, maybe. Thank you.
I I was just wondering, have any of the general statutes that are referenced changed? I I can't see it on the screen. I'm just asking.
No, those are, those are still um the same. This was just done in twenty sixteen, Mike, so this isn't as old as some of the others we've seen.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jen, Jen, you have another question? Jay?
Sorry about that.
That's okay, Jen.
So I know this is going to sound picky, but what is the sentence that every transaction involving the transfer of property should be by purchase order? Um, shouldn't it be every? Every purchase should have a purchase order or a formal contract, including like software, which isn't technically property? And I guess, I guess it's intellectual property, but I just don't understand what that sentence even means. Shouldn't we just have everything subject to purchase order or contract?
Well, I think that's what this is saying. Every transaction involving the transfer of property, when we get property from one person to us, you know, um shall be by purchase order. So it is, it's actually saying that. Everything has to have a feel.
Every purchase transaction. I I just don't understand the insertion of the word property.
Oh, how would you like it to be, Jay?
Oh, I I just think that every uh purchasing transaction should be by purchase order or formal contract. I I just, I don't understand the legality of why we're inserting transfer of property.
I think that's what cave language.
Yeah. And again, it's picky and and.
I support Jay's, I support Jay's recommendation.
Jay, could you say it again so I can write it down and I'm going to share with Floyd and see what he says?
Yeah, I just.
Do the other one, I'll do this one.
E- every purchasing transaction should be by purchase order or formal contract. Now, it might just be that Floyd will say, you know, everything's property, even if it's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Bits and bytes, but it just, I I don't understand why that insertion, but anyway.
Okay, I'll find out.
Uh, I would use purchase rather than purchasing, get rid of the gerund, which can be confusing. Every purchase transaction shall or must.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Well, this is a first reading, so you check with Floyd. We can vote on it as a first reading, check with Floyd, make corrections if needed, and come back with it.
I do. May I?
Back.
As I look at this, I think we might want to add yet another word. So every purchase transaction shall be preceded by purchase order or formal contract, because if if what I think I heard in the past is that we're trying to play catch-up on, oh, we never had a purchase order for this, then maybe we want to specify that the purchase order must come first, unless there's an emergency, which.
Yeah, there's that emergency language, too.
Good point, Matthew.
Yeah.
So why don't we put put that down, too, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, send it back to us, and we'll work on that language, if that's okay.
I'll I'll get a recommendation from Floyd also.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of approving um as a first reading policy three three twenty um purchasing, say aye, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, oppose? Abstentions? Okay, passed unanimously. Okay. The next one is to approve the twenty twenty-five Board of Education meeting schedule. Um, did everybody get a copy of the meeting schedule for this year? Can you make that a little bigger, Mark, please?
I have an addition for the policy committee, uh, January fourteenth.
Okay.
That's actually um when we have a special meeting on budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like all of these meetings are for six o'clock, Matthew.
Um.
Except for policy.
No, policy's got a six o'clock.
Well, I consult with my friends. I was.
Because I thought Ian said he couldn't make it at five.
I miss that some old.
Yeah, she, I think she changed it, because Ian had said he couldn't make it.
So if we make it, if we make it, I I I thought he said he could. If we make it at six, we can always bring it back for a change.
Well, once we set this in stone and agree and vote on it, then um it goes to the. then, um, it goes to the town. And once it's submitted to the town, these are the times and dates. We can certainly cancel the meeting and then schedule a special meeting in its place if we change the time or date. That's why we kind of held off till January, because we didn't want to, you remember how confusing it got last year when we were canceling meetings and rescheduling? So, are you good with six, Matthew?
I'll call Erica tomorrow to see if we can schedule a special meeting for January.
Well, you probably could. You could.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Are you good with six o'clock, Matthew?
I'm good for either one. I don't have a problem with either one.
Jay, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, I just was gonna second the motion for discussion.
Oh, okay, thanks. Thank you. Jen, you have a question?
Just a comment. I thought Ian was going to come back, so if we want to push this out till later about that, five o'clock.
We don't have, we don't have later. We got one more.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll leave it at six and any changes, well, you'll make them as a committee. Okay. Don't forget, next week, Curriculum is going to meet on Thursday. So who's ever on Curriculum, you'll be meeting on Thursday, January sixteenth at, um, six o'clock. I just want you to see that. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
For policy, should we say we're going to be meeting by Zoom? Because that seems to be what people want to do. It makes it easier for, make it easier for Andrea and make it easier for, uh, for Ian.
Well, I think all of our meetings have been hybrid. I will ask Joyce if she has to designate that or not. But I think when you call it hybrid, it can go full remote or it can be part and part, or it can be full in person. So I'll ask Joyce if we have to specify that, but we can certainly do that.
So I have a, a point on that. Um, I, I, I think we, I lo, I like that we have the physical location, maybe just put a asterisk or note that's, say, when, when possible, make every effort to have an online component, hybrid, online hybrid component too. Because we might not do that for the, I don't know if we do that for the awards night or the awards day in, um, the middle school. Maybe we do.
I, I, well, I don't know. The middle school might be a little tricky in how we run that, but I could find out from Clint.
But, but just the, like, because most of ours, as you said, most of ours do have this online component. And I do know for the state registering of it, um, if you advertise something as hybrid, then there has to be both, uh, uh, in-person and online component. And that means someone's gotta be, um, and that in-person location. We ran into this with other committee meetings.
Thanks, Mike. Jen?
Um, I think curriculum, we need to revisit because I think those are Mondays, right? And don't we have our committee of the whole meetings at six? So.
We don't meet the first Monday of the month, right?
Oh, okay, yep.
Well, it does say finance and facilities would meet the first Monday of, the, the first, no, first Tuesday. I'm sorry.
We're the first Tuesday. Okay, yep, nope, my bad.
Yeah. Adrian was, was part of this discussion, and so he's the chair of curriculum, so he was.
Yeah, he really, he was really the one who kind of helped us set the curriculum meeting somewhere.
Okay, Jay?
Yeah, uh, getting back to what Mike said, I, I know that that was the law for a while, but I was told that, um, the state changed it so that the hybrid, as we did last night, could at the last minute be changed to all remote and that the state made that change, after COVID. But, you know, I certainly can, we can research that further, but that's why we always.
Joyce look into that, but that's what she has said too, right, Jay?
Yeah, and that's what the town does. Uh, the manager indicated that's why he does it that way. And that's why last year, we started posting every meeting as hybrid. The state finally gave us some flexibility, so.
And I think we should continue to do that. Post every meeting as hybrid.
I mean.
Should we just write that in then on this calendar somewhere?
I think, I'm gonna ask Joyce to do that and make sure that that's official.
Any other comments? We are looking for volunteers to be part of the town city council RTM and board of ed liaison committee. They meet quarterly. Um, they didn't meet at all last year, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think they met at all last year. But if the board wants to continue that, we need some members to be part of that. We need at least two board members. If not, then I, I guess that committee, that liaison committee wouldn't exist. So.
Bev, if it's quarterly, I can, I can do quarterly.
You could do quarterly? Okay.
I'd be fine with it too.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's got that new structure that you, you mentioned.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mike and Jen. And the other one is, um, Susan has invited us. I sent it on an email. I only got one response and that was from Ian about being part of the paraprofessional liaison committee.
That's usually an after-school meeting, um, you know, like about four o'clock, four thirty, I think.
We need one more board member.
Yeah, and that, that's, um, you know, it's really a way to work with staff too. So Lori, Lapine, and Denise and I always join and we really, it helps, um, it helps to work out things that are, you know, they're dealing with, they're struggling with, or they're, they're looking forward to having and to work it out, you know, without a grievance or, it's just a good relationship builder as well.
Bev, I'd prefer if you could find somebody who's going to be on the board after January twenty-sixth, but if you can't find somebody, I'll, I'll step up.
You'll step up? Okay.
But if you can, see if you can find somebody who, who has a longer time horizon.
Well, you'll be good for a year.
I, I will do it for a year if you want, but I think it'd be better for somebody who's going to be here longer than I'll be here to gain that experience. I'm, I'll step up if you need it.
Okay, thank you. Well, nobody else volunteered except for Ian and myself. So we need one more person. So if you don't mind, I'll put you on that committee, Matthew.
Thank you. Uh, one last thing on this, uh, this meeting schedule. You, you happen to have put Rosh Hashanah and thank you for your sensitivity to that. Uh, you did not have Yom Kippur, which is of kind of the greatest sanctity of our year. And if we're putting Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, we should probably figure out the, uh, essential Muslim holiday and list them as well.
Yeah. What did you say, Matthew? Can you repeat that?
Sure. Uh, thank you for your sensitivity for including Rosh Hashanah, uh, which is its twenty-second through sunset to sunset, twenty-second to twenty-fourth. Yom Kippur, the day of atonement, is the holiest day of our year, and that is October first sundown to October second sundown, one day only. If we're going to, uh, look at, uh, the various faith communities, we might want to consider Ramadan. I, I know it, it moves around the calendar from year to year because it's a purely lunar calendar. But if, if that falls, uh, in our school year, that should be noted too.
Okay. Okay, we'll look into that. We'll investigate.
Actually, I'm glad Matthew brought that up because I had a question about that. Um, I, I think we've got a, a regular board meeting scheduled for September twenty-second. Did we want to move that? I marked that down earlier, but forgot to ask about that.
Oh, yes, we do. We do, Mike.
Well, you're allowed to, I won't be there, but you're allowed to have a meeting. I mean, it's, it's, that's fine. If, if, you know, if that's what the board wants to do, you'll survive without me.
But it's not as fun, so.
Whatever. I appreciate the concern. Whatever you guys want is fine.
Well, we can always change that later. We could, yeah, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to take a vote on, uh, approving the 2025 Board of Education meeting schedule? All those in favor say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? All right, approved by everyone. Thank you.
Could I, could I invite somebody to channel Andrea with the next comment? You know what Andrea likes to say.
Yeah, but we have one more.
We got one more.
One more? Oh, I apologize.
All right, that's okay, Matthew. All right, the last item on the agenda is to request the town council, request, to request the town council provide funding for any temporary staffing needs to support the Board of Education's operational review. Um, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I want to make an amendment to it.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Matthew.
Uh, reading it, it supports any temporary staffing needs to support the council requested Board of Education operation review. I mean, the reason we're incurring these costs is because council has directed us to do something and we're cooperating. But I want to remind, we're asking for the support because of, it was their request.
Yeah. One of the other things that I was talking to the business office, we did put staffing, but the other thing, um, we talked about where there could be supply cost if there was, you know, an enormous amount of copying or an equipment cost if we had to, you know, get something special. So I don't know if we should add that, but I don't know what other costs would come up. I just don't know. And it really has not, um, it has not paralyzed anything at this point. I mean, Ray has only, I think, given us three, three days, um, working on this the whole fall. You know, he's helped me with some other things that I've needed help with, but he, if we're, we're just strictly gonna, he's gonna do his time cards just for the town review that we would then, you know, and I'll talk to John Burt, maybe we can talk together about how, if we should just do it month to month, because I don't think it's going to be that extraordinary a charge if we just do it month to month. And then if there's any staff, we have, um, some temporary staff that, um, are, you know, not at the same salary level and we're, he's going to entertain a conversation with Lori and I to kind of fix that cost for him a little better. So we're going to do that. And then if there's someone who can do some of the work here that isn't as costly, we will do that. So that's why we just said staffing.
Okay. Mike, you have a question or comment?
Yes, um, uh, so I'm definitely supportive of asking the town council to, to pay what they, for what they imposed on us. And I think that, the temporary staffing helps because that way we can maintain the, the planned needs of the, of the school system along with this extra. Um, but what I'm wondering about is our specific, um, motion here. It doesn't seem like it's particularly actionable by the town council without some kind of dollar amount. And so, so do we first just request that they pay for what's already been spent and, and have a dollar value along with that? And then do it, maybe not monthly, but every other month or something like that? Because, because I, th, this is, what are we looking for? A position statement that they'll agree to pay whatever? Or I think they'd be more likely to see the doll, want to see the dollars along with it before voting on anything. So I, I feel that if we vote this motion right now and it goes to town council, it's kind of like, it's not going to get acted on. And, and so I'd rather have something, you know, firm.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't know how we get a dollar now.
Well, I think that he hasn't done a, a lot of work on it yet, so there might be three days worth of cost. So we might be able to calculate what it is so far that we've spent. But we don't know that, you know, let's say he gets a list of work that might take him more time in a month, you know, in the next month. So I just don't know. You know, we've seen the scope of work, but I don't know what kind of time it's going to take.
Yeah. How would we do what you want to do, what you want, Mike?
I guess it would be, honestly, what we'd want to be able to do is just build them, but.
Yeah, that's right.
But that, that can't happen. Um, so.
Like on a month-to-month basis, so it's not, you know, an extraordinary amount.
Yeah, something like that or every other month, because, you know, it has to work through the, our system to, the town council to vote on it or every three months. But just sort of retroactively, like it's, you know, reimbursing us for, um, this, this time spent beyond, you know, you know, ba, basically for Ray in this case, but anything else. Like, if, if we did know the number now, we could ask for that first installment.
Yeah, yeah, I could get that for you guys. It's, that would be easy. We could do it like on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, something like that. Something they can actually vote on and, and actually have the money transferred.
Okay. Ian?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to also just announce a, I did rejoin the meeting at about seven, ten. Um, and I just caught Mike's comment and I agree with, uh, the sentiment there that a little specificity would go far. And maybe like coming up, and I agree with Susan's approach with the idea of maybe looking at like, uh, you know, a timeframe where periodically we'll, we'll, you know, uh, submit a bill for reimbursement. And I'm not sure how that language would work. Um, but I, I would defer to the professional staff to try to cobble that together in a way that is, is coherent and, uh, comprehensive. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Ian, if you were in the room when I had mentioned that beyond temporary staffing, there could be some supply cost depending on what they're asking for, um, or equipment that we might need if there's, um, I don't know, extraordinary printing or printing cost.
Yep, yeah. So like basically maybe set it up in some way, like, you know, to be invoiced, uh, you know, like as Mike suggested, maybe every other month, uh, you know, they get too much bill or quarterly. Uh, something where that we track it internally, so there's a definitive, uh, itemization of what we spend, whether it's.
Yeah.
Uh, capital, whether it's labor or capital or, or whatever. Yeah, definitely. I agree with that approach. Yes.
Jen, you have a comment? Jen?
Yes, can, um, since we know, can we say something to the effect like not to exceed like $25,000 so that they know that at most?
I don't know.
I know, but like if we just leave it blank, going to what Mike had mentioned, they may think that we would just continue and it could be, at least we're putting a cap on what's, it's going to be covered. And if our cost is going to exceed that, then we can go back and say, hey, for the remainder part of the work, it's another 10,000. So at least they know what they're signing up for in the near term. It's just a thought. Um, because I would like to know, like, I wouldn't want to just leave an open blank checkbook, because then, you know, they may end up with like a $75,000 cost and they probably don't want that either, because they have a budget to manage as well.
There's a, a pretty large scope of work, Jen. So right now, like I said, it's very reasonable and it's been very doable. Um, but I think that, you know, moving forward, we're just not so sure how much time it is going to take. So that's the only problem.
Mike, you have something else?
Nope, just left my hand up.
Okay. Does anybody want to make an amendment to this motion?
I, I tried to. Can I give it another whack?
Go ahead.
To request the town council to provide funding for any temporary staffing and supplies, supply support for the council requested Board of Education's operation review, the modality and amount to be negotiated. Now, if you will second it just for discussion purposes, I'll withdraw it if you don't like it. I would like to explain how I would, I foresee that being a productive way to do it.
I'll second.
I was gonna say, I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. So we are having, I don't want you to, we're having two different things that are both correct, but they're mutually exclusive. On the one hand, we don't know what it's going to cost. And on the other hand, they want to know what it's going to cost. And we're not in a position to tell them, to give them any true figure. What we can do is, uh, ask, you'll have the discussion informally with John, somebody, Susan, I presume, will have the discussion with John or maybe Bev or whomever, and explain that we recognize that they need to have a solid figure and show them why we can't give them a solid figure, but work out with them a modality. Having explained it to, uh, John, I think it would behoove us to have somebody, uh, preferably our superintendent or chair, come to the council meeting the evening. come to the council meeting the evening that it's going to be discussed so we can explain that we understand their need for a figure and they can understand why it's very difficult for us to give a precise figure and that we want to work together. I'm trying to thread a needle because both sides are right. If you don't think that's a good idea, I'll withdraw the motion.
Now, that's a good idea. Ian?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate the approach, um, that Matthew's taken there and, and I would welcome that kind of language. Uh, but I also wanted to just voice support for Jen's, uh, suggestion that, you know, maybe we, um, you know, try to, you know, estimate a cap that would be the, a stopping point, a way station, so to speak, where, you know, the town and the board can, can stop and assess and say, okay, well, you know, based on everything that, you know, has been done, you know, do we want to continue? Well, if so, then, you know, we'll have to like, you know, raise the cap. But, you know, that way they, that, we can kind of split the, split the middle as Matthew's trying to do where like, you know, we can say like, we can't be certain what it's gonna cost, but we'll, we'll set a cap now so that the town council could be assured that we would not go over a certain amount without coming back to them with, you know, a demonstration as to the need, uh, for going above that amount. And I'm not sure what that amount is. Again, I would leave it to the business office and the superintendent to, to estimate, you know, how, how far a certain amount could get us. And if that's likely to kind of like satiate the need of, of the, uh, audit or, I mean, the, uh, the operational review, uh, if it's reasonable, if it's a reasonable estimate, um, that might achieve the mission. Um, and then, but also would set a good threshold that, you know, that the town council could be comfortable that they would not go above that amount without having a chance to look at the overall, um, status of the information produced and the operational review and check in with everybody and say, okay, you know, it's becoming more expensive now. We can't go over like whatever that amount is without justification. So, um, you know, I, I think that, and that could be a point where like maybe the operational review gets wrapped up or they decide to continue and then we do a second round with another cap. Thank you.
Uh, Mike?
Susan.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Susan, is it, what I thought I heard you say, though not in these words, was that it's at this moment not possible to give that estimate? Is it possible? Can you come up with such an estimate? Because if you can, then Ian's suggestion is great. If you cannot come up with an estimate.
Well, I, I know what's been done to date, but it hasn't been a whole lot. Are we all frozen?
No, but. Matthew, Jen's not frozen.
I think just Matthew. I'm.
Yeah, just Matthew. I'm, I'm good over here.
Uh, Jen, when you said 25,000, was that for the whole review or per month?
Oh, for the entire review. Um, just based on like the cost overrun we saw in salaries, I was thinking, um, roughly like $150 per hour times X amount of hours, you know what I mean? Like, we can easily make it so that, hey, for this amount, it's like contracting 100 hours of services.
Have you seen the scope of work though, Jen? Like it, I mean, you looked at the scope of work, um, in its entirety. Now, it may be spread out over time, so I just can't say, you know, so far, like I said, we haven't had, but I think about three days or three to five days maybe since it began. So we could certainly get what we've got to date and, and just, you know, and I can work with the team to see if we can get some kind of a estimate. And we can say we're estimating it at this per quarter if the work continues to go as it has, you know? Because we do have a little bit of information now on how much it has time it's cost us so far.
Any comments about that, Jen? Or you're good?
Um, I'm okay. We can see. I mean, it's easy. I mean, he's not even a contractor at this point. He's like a employee, like he's not, oh, forget it. I'm, I'll keep my comments to myself.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Yeah, um, I remember in an early report, maybe in December, uh, what was the, uh, we had the hourly rate for Ray. It is about, it's way above 150.
Yeah, I think it was $160 now?
Yeah, but we're gonna, Lori and I are gonna meet with him to see if we can do something like as an employee, a little different than a contractor.
And, and so you.
We're gonna work with him.
And, and you, Susan, you said three to five days at this point. Is that like eight-hour days, three to five days?
Like six, probably.
Yeah.
And I, this is just going by my memory, Mike.
Yeah.
Pretty good, but, you know, but I don't, I just know that it hasn't been as exhaustive yet as we had contemplated. It's been reasonable.
And so it sounds like we're below 10K?
No, it doesn't. No, if it's 160 an hour times six hours, it's $1,000 a day times three days.
Oh, I meant, sorry, under a 10,000, sorry.
Yeah, it's under 10.
But.
3,000 to 5,000.
3,000 a week.
You know, we're assuming, we're, you know, we're putting these numbers out there like we know. I don't have that in writing or exactly. I'd rather get you the real numbers.
How would you like to proceed? Do you want to go with, with Matthew has suggested? Go with what Jen has suggested, but we don't know a number yet? Or just wait and table this and come back with better numbers? It's up to you guys.
I have a question for you. I don't want to jump on Mike. Okay, uh, if we didn't do this tonight, if there's not an emergency to do this tonight, would this give you and Susan the opportunity to speak with John informally and see if, if you guys can reach a mutual path by which, uh, we can see what we can do, just an informal meeting?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
I can kind of bring him what it's cost us to date, you know?
I mean, we have to be on the same team.
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
We've been working together.
Mm-hmm.
Jay?
Yeah, I, I think, um, there's no urgency to do this tonight. The board has, has considered this in the past and, uh, um, so there's no urgency that it, that it happened tonight until we get more information. I just want to make a point that, um, I'm a little concerned about wording it as the council, um, requested, uh, operational review because there were several board members that also, uh, supported this review. And I, I just, I don't think we need to include that kind of language in there. Um, and, uh, so I, I would prefer not to see that. Um, but I would like to see some firmer numbers.
All right, we'll get back to you.
Give us some time to think about it.
Your point is well taken.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, and support Jay's, uh, statement there too. I think that's, uh, appropriate to, to consider.
All right, so we'll work on this motion, get some firm numbers and get back to you guys. And that's the end of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you all for coming on Zoom. I appreciate it, uh, to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Thomas.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose?伸伸，we are adjourned. Um, have a great week and, um, I'll see you soon.